Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norwich Area Museums Committee. Do we have any apologies, Jackie?
Chair, we do, well, we have apologies from Council Huntley, which means that Council of Butchett Colton as Vice Chair will be in the chair. I have not heard from some members and it may be that there's just a delay or they're caught up somewhere. So I will look at that when I do the minutes. But we have had apologies from Council of Cipson. And Council of Watkins is running late. And obviously, Council of Huntley. All our non-voting members are here. And so we're just waiting to see, I believe, Councilor Nobbs has difficulties attending these meetings too. So I imagine that's an apology too. Thank you.
Do we have any public questions or petitions at all?
No, Chair.
Okay, anybody got any declarations of interest?
Brilliant. And let's go on to the minutes then. And approved the accuracy of the minutes held on the 8th of December 2020. Has anybody got any matters on that? John DeGeneres, your hand up? Everybody okay with those? Wow, this is going quick. And then, so then we've got the Norwich Museums update. To receive a report on the activities of Norwich Museum for the period December 2020 to January 2021. Is that you, Robin?
Yes, Chair. So, thank you, Chair. I'll introduce the report and a number of my colleagues are on the call and will make. But I will start the report and just to update members on where we are in terms of Covid, both in terms of Norwich museums but also across the wider Norfolk Museum service. So as members are aware, we did reopen Norwich Castle alongside three other sites in the museum service back in December. So we reopened on Thursday, the 3rd of December, but then actually closed with effect from the 24th of December, once it was confirmed that we were entering the third national lockdown. Members may be aware of the impact of the government's recently announced roadmap on museums. So just to confirm that museums, certainly in terms of indoor museum attractions, will not be able to reopen now until the earliest of the 17th of May. So in terms of Norwich Castle and other Norwich sites reopening, 17th of May is the earliest date by which that can happen. The only exception to that in terms of Norfolk Museum Service is Gresson Hall Farm and Workhouse, which we are looking to reopen as an outdoor attraction only from the 12th of April. That only applies to Gresson Hall there and it'd only be outdoor areas at Gresson Hall. The only other update from that government roadmap relates to the resumption of wedding ceremonies. And members will be aware that we operate a very busy wedding service at Norwich Castle in partnership with the Norfolk Registrar's Service. And guidance from the registrars indicates that they will be able to resume weddings at Norwich Castle from the 29th of March with limited numbers of attendees. And my colleague Stuart Garner, who's joining the meeting, will be able to give you an update on that element later in the meeting. So the headlines really for museums are the vast majority museum sites, the earliest they can open is the 17th of May, with the exception in Norfolk of plans for Gresson Hall. As outlined in the report and something members will be familiar with from previous meetings, you'll see in section one that in common with colleagues from across local government, Norfolk Museum Service staff have been supporting a range of activities during the pandemic, not only ensuring that our sites are regularly checked in terms of premises, security and critical collections care, also of course maintaining very lively engagement programmes primarily using digital channels. But staff have also been supporting wider Covid response, including wider support for trading standards for the registrars and also more recently supporting NHS activity. So in common with colleagues, I'm sure at Norwich City Council and other parts of the county council, a number of our staff continuing to support wider Covid activities. Just to remind members that when we do reopen our sites, unless the guidance changes, we are expecting to reopen with the current level of Covid secure restrictions. So when sites reopen on 17th of May, it will be with similar very levels of control. That includes asking visitors to pre-book time slots using art tickets, reflecting the fact we have very limited capacity at sites because of social distancing restrictions. And at most of our museums, that equates to about 30% of our normal fire capacity totals. So we're operating, as you can see, at significantly reduced capacity. We've, as you know, opened and closed our sites a number of times now. So staff teams are familiar with that process. But clearly, ahead of reopening, we'll be ensuring that all of the correct procedures are in place. We will do refresher training with our staff to ensure that staff feel confident about coming back to the workplace. But we will be continuing to operate certainly up to the end of June with the existing levels of very close controls in how we open and operate our sites. Those controls are informed by guidance from the National Museums Directors Council. And we're also working closely with colleagues from the English Civic Museums Network to again ensure that we're applying best practice in all that we do. And clearly, we're working very closely with our colleagues from the County Council's Health, Safety and Wellbeing Team to ensure that our reopening is managed in a very careful way. But we do now have considerable experience, I think, of opening and closing museums. And I'm very confident that when we're able to do so, we'll be able to very efficiently get our sites open again. And once again, welcome visitors back into our museums. At this point, Chair, I was going to ask Stuart Garner to just inform members about the arrangements that are being put into place at Norwich Castle.
Yeah, go ahead. That's great.
Sorry. Good afternoon, everybody. I just want to give you an update on what we're doing at the moment in preparation for opening on the 17th of May. So as members are obviously aware and Robin has kindly said that we can't open unless we're in tier one or tier two. We're due to open on the 17th of May. Work is continuing to get us open again. Thankfully, we're already obviously previously working within Covid restrictions at the last time that we were open. But this time, actually, with the plan is going forward, we'll be using the same entrances and exits as we were using previously. So just to remind members, I've put a plan on the document there that involves using E8 and E9 as the entrances to the museum and E6 as the exit, which as is shown on the plan that you have there. But the one added advantage this time is that actually with work ceasing within the rotunda to essential drainage works that are linked to the KEEP project, this time around we'll actually be able to open the rotunda balcony, which is fantastic for visitors because it means that we'll also have access to our rotunda lift, which means that disabled visitors and those with buggies etcetera can gain access to the first floor and also to the Royal Norfolk Regimental Collections, which previously weren't available because of those ongoing drainage works. So going forward, to combine with the fact that we'll obviously have the Chrome Exhibition opening in due course, we will also have the added advantage of allowing a wider area of the museum to be open to the public. It will also have added advantages in that it will open up the rotunda significantly because so far whilst these works have been ongoing, for any members that have been in the museum, would have noticed we had to effectively cut the rotunda in half in order for those works to take place with a temporary hoarding. All of those hoardings will be going and we will gain back all of the rotunda, as I say, including the rotunda lift and staircase, which is a huge step forward for us and a real plus for the visitor experience as well. Moving on to branch museums. I'm trying to give an update as well on where we are. We are currently planning on opening the Museum of Norwich to coincide with the opening of the castle on the 17th of May. So that will be an offer to the public again using art tickets as a pre-booked ticket option so that we can control the numbers within the museum. As Robin made reference to a moment ago, with Covid-19, you have to limit the numbers based on the maximum permitted fire numbers and you apply it to 30% of those numbers. Museum of Norwich unfortunately only has 100 permissible people in the building at any one time under those fire regulations, which means we then are only allowed 30 when we take Covid into account. So on that basis, we're going to use art tickets to pre-book tickets, 12 tickets every half an hour. So that's a maximum of 24 people an hour with an average time of an hour and allowing for then six members of staff and contractors to be on site at any one time. On that basis, we're going to open the museum to the public on three days a week. We used to open for five days a week, but we're going to open for three days a week initially. But we're also going to have an additional day likely to be on a Wednesday, whereby we will have that as an allocated education day where we can accept school bookings or group bookings to come into the museum. Because of the need to pre-book tickets, it makes it very, very difficult for us to have both paying public and school groups in at the same time because of most classes would be at least 24 people inside. So that makes it very, very difficult. So we need to have a dedicated day where we can still have that open to the public. Strangers Hall Museum, we are not looking to open to the public in May. Instead, we'll be looking to open Strangers Hall to the public at some point in the summer, likely to be July. However, we will be opening it for school and group bookings initially. That's mainly due to the fact that the building itself is very, very difficult to use from a Covid perspective because it don't lend themselves very well to one-way systems etcetera. But so we'll be looking initially to just open that up to school groups and organised groups only. And then finally, on this section, Norwich Castle Wedding Ceremonies, as again Robin made reference to, we will be recommencing wedding ceremonies at Norwich Castle on the 29th of March. In advance of that, we will be having some exceptional circumstance weddings, which we've actually had one of actually already during the lockdown period. So we're going to be having about eight exceptional circumstance weddings between now and the 29th of March. But from the 29th of March, we will be open again for weddings on seven days a week. And that will be in place up until the point when we open and of course beyond. That's all from me. Thank you.
Oh yeah, thanks very much.
Chair, just to say, we're happy to pause at that point if members had any questions in regard to Covid elements.
Can I just say that I'm sure we all want to give thanks to your team for all the outstanding work they're doing anyway in this difficult situation. And once again, they're kind of trumped. So can you, can we either have that minuted or can you tell your staff, thank you so much? And I just had an email from George, he can't get in and he just wanted to thank everybody and said that he's enjoyed his time on the Museums Committee. Anybody got any questions for either Stuart or Robin? John?
Yes, well, we've been told by Boris that hopefully from June the 21st, everything will be back to normal. If that is the case, well, we'd be looking to run the museums as normal from that date if we're given the green light by the government.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Obviously, we await, I guess, clarification of what the situation is in terms of museums at the end of June. I think that's probably on two levels. There's obviously the view at government level, but also whether there are any either formal restrictions or advisory restrictions that might be applied at more local level. So whether that may be particular restrictions applied at a Norfolk level, we clearly need to wait and see. So at this stage, we are obviously prepared to respond to frankly, any scenario. And going back to Councilor Butchett Colton's very kind comments, I think what our staff have proved over the last year or so is how flexible they can be and how quickly actually we can adjust our operations to meet whatever the current restrictions are. So I think we're in a very good place to respond pretty swiftly subject to what those restrictions are. So I guess for me, the question mark is whether there is any sort of either national, local, more sort of advisory restrictions that we may want to be guided by. And obviously, we'd be guided by Norfolk County Council in terms of their approach to those sort of more advisory restrictions. I mean, for what it's worth, I would be surprised if we were in a position at the end of June to entirely lift all current restrictions. But we would be, as I say, very, very happy to do that. And could I think swiftly adapt our site setups to respond to any loosening of the current restrictions? So basically, as members are aware, our current restrictions are predicated on maintaining two-metre social distancing at all times. And obviously also currently predicated on no mixing of groups. So if any of those guidelines were to change or be removed entirely, that clearly enables us to revisit our sort of operational sort of planning. So I think we're just sort of poised to respond to whatever situation we are faced with. And the sooner obviously that we're able to get the sites back fully open, we'd be delighted to do that.
Yeah, just as a means of support, would you like us to come along on the opening day?
Well, I think it's always lovely to see councillors clearly. What we will be doing on the opening day is implementing our pre-booked time ticket slots. So as I'm sure members will have done throughout the sort of pandemic period, you know, please do book slots. And if you struggle to do that days of reopening after the 17th, is try and keep things relatively quiet so that staff are able to sort of test the systems and build their confidence. So my sense is we probably wouldn't be wanting to sort of particularly sort of draw attention to that date so that we've got a few days where staff can just test the systems and get confident. But I think, again, subject to restrictions, we'll be very alert to any opportunities to sort of see bigger numbers coming into the museum. And there's a number of opportunities this year, particularly regarding the Friends celebrations, to really sort of ask councillors to support promoting what the museum is doing. But I would certainly encourage members to visit the sites when we reopen. You can certainly pre-book tickets. And as I say, if you have any problems with that, please don't hesitate to contact either Stuart or I for assistance.
Yeah, okay. Whatever you want us to do.
Anybody else got any questions? No, no more questions, Robin. So over to you.
Thank you, Chair. And we do very much appreciate members' support throughout this very difficult period. What I'd like to do, Chair, is now introduce my colleague, Dr Helen Lennon, who is the Learning Manager for Norwich Museums, who's going to introduce her section of the Museums Report.
Thank you, Robin. Lovely to see everybody. Thank you, Chair, for the meeting today. So you've got my report, which hopefully everybody's had a chance to have a look through. And obviously, in a few moments, I'm more than happy to take any questions that anybody may have at this stage. As I've reported to this committee previously, our learning programmes, formal and informal, have been continuing throughout the various Covid lockdowns with schools at school, school pupils at school and obviously currently until next week, learning from home. The current national lockdown obviously hit schools incredibly hard and caused a great deal of very swift changes in terms of how teachers were continuing to deliver curriculum for their pupils. And as we might expect, there was a drop-off, I suppose, in terms of in the early stages, in the first few weeks of national lockdown, where teachers were obviously quite understandably making sure that all of their pupils were able to learn, that they had digital capacity to engage from home. And obviously, that was the priority. Since that situation sort of settled down, we've been really encouraged by the amazing resilience and commitment of teachers across the county and beyond to continue to engage children with learning beyond the classroom in that traditional sense and to work with organisations such as ourselves to really bolster children's education and to make sure that they are getting as full and rich and experienced despite the challenges that are ongoing. So since, as I say, since everything's sort of settled into a little bit more of a routine, although it's remained obviously challenging for a lot of people, we have seen a gradual increase in the take-up of our virtual and our digital offer. So we now have quite a strong digital offer which provides pre-recorded film, detailed teachers' resource packs to support teachers to deliver the content and also the offer of a live-streamed event where the pupils can send in their questions to us in advance and we respond to their questions in costume. My team are still delivering in costume directly to pupils despite the challenges of the way that education is ongoing at the moment. That can often be challenging because often for safeguarding reasons, children don't have their cameras on, which is absolutely understandable. Occasionally, they do, which is lovely. And we present actually to children's faces and get their responses, which is hugely exciting and obviously develops our engagement that much greater. So I think that just for the purposes of this meeting, you know, we were around 650 pupil engagements in both December and in January. Obviously, with February being a shorter month and also having the February half term in it, it was lower in February. But a good number of bookings have already come in for March. And I'm hopeful and expectant that once schools do return to the classroom as of next week. Again, once things settle down in the classroom, I'm hoping that teachers will again feel confident and committed to those wider engagements of learning outside the classroom. And I very much hope that they will be looking to us to support and augment that. And obviously, we are regularly communicating with our schools through e-bulletins, through direct mailings to teachers etcetera, to make sure that they're aware of what we can hopefully do for them, which is very much how we see our service and very much want to be there in the best way that we can to support them. That probably leads me just on to something which I think I mentioned at the last meeting, was that we were fortunate to receive a grant from the Festival Bridge as part of their Moving It On scheme. And it's to support both production of content but also research into educational digital programmes through heritage and cultural organisations. So we were fortunate enough to get a grant through that scheme and other museums in the region, including the Fitzwilliam in Cambridge also received grants. So we were very pleased to receive that. And the focus of our application is to develop a GCSE digital programme. We stand out quite remarkably in terms of the ways in which we managed to get secondary school pupils into the museum. It is sector-wide recognised as a real challenge to get secondary schools to be able to visit museums for a whole host of very well embedded and understood reasons. But we're fortunate that we have managed to develop those. My colleague Jenny Williams has developed those relationships and really secured a strong secondary programme at the museum. And we're very determined that we maintain those links and we continue to deliver to those secondary schools despite the current challenges and obviously the ongoing lockdown, which Robin and Stuart have just outlined well through into the middle of May. So that grant will be used to partner directly with GCSE history teachers and their pupils. And our partner school is Dearham Neved. And we are very much piloting and testing and getting feedback on the way that that digital programme will be developed for our secondary schools. And then hopefully in a couple of months' time, that will actually go live and be rolled out. And obviously, we'll continue to evaluate it then. So that's a sort of an exciting new strand of our digital programme. And it's interesting, as well as a research-based grant, that we will come to understand what working digitally with those older children mean. Working at primary level is one thing. There's a lot of fun, there's a lot of entertainment etcetera. When we're looking at GCSEs, we're looking at qualifications and we're looking at revisions and exams. We need to make sure that we're absolutely nailing the curriculum delivery and how we do that digitally is something that we as a sector all need to learn how to do. So that's quite an interesting and important piece of new work that we're going to be doing. We've also continued to do work with trainee teachers. We have very good partnerships with UEA and with trainee teachers at City College. And we deliver events for them on an annual basis as part of their curriculum delivery. And we've been very pleased that those relationships have stood the test of Covid. And we've been again supporting those trainee teachers in their own learning to think about how they can use museums, collections, heritage sites etcetera in their own teaching and to give them some hints and tips etcetera along the way. And in January, we delivered the Take One Picture Training Event for the PGCE trainee teachers at UEA, which is again a partnership with the National Gallery. So that's again a longstanding partnership which we've been able to maintain and convert into a digital offer. And delighted to say that there was a lot of smiles and a lot of very positive feedback, both, you know, for the effort obviously everybody had put into making those events work, but also the value that those trainees teachers saw in how museums can support them in their teaching once they formally get into the classroom. So that's probably all I'll say on the formal curriculum-based side of things. Of course, a large amount of my team's work is also dedicated to our visitor programmes. And we've been working very hard again to convert those from facilitated in-person at the museum activities to digital. And hopefully, if you take a look at the Watson page on the website, that again will give you a flavour of the sorts of activities and events that we've been running, including our most recent at the castle, which was called Scribe School. So that was a family, a series of family workshops which were delivered live, live online and were based around the medieval collections and inspired by calligraphy about marginalia and encouraging children and their families to write stories and to be imaginative and creative in their writing and to excite them about the use of words and language etcetera. And we had some amazing stories back, including an exploding king and all sorts of things. So yeah, the responses that we got and just the wonder of the children's imaginations to create the stories was really impressive and really inspiring. So we continue to do that. And the other area, of course, of my team's work is very much youth engagement. And Rachel Daniel is the Norwich Project Worker for Kick for Dust and has been doing a huge amount of work recently with some relatively small sort of groups of 10 or so young people but working digitally. And working in that area has not necessarily been the easiest thing to do. Some young people have been quite resistant to working digitally. But Rachel has some very well-established relationships with those young people now. And we have a Castle Curators Group, which is actually working with the curator of the KEEP project to select objects and to write interpretive text etcetera, which will go into the KEEP new galleries when the KEEP does reopen. So that's just one example of the ways in which we are able to continue working remotely and directly with our groups and continue. uh remotely um and with directly with our groups and continuing to build those relationships. But I won't say any more on youth engagement because I know that Christine's going to give a much more detailed account of Kick the Dust in a few moments. Um, so that's everything from me.
Thank you so much, Helen. That's brilliant. Can I just welcome councillor Watkins and councillor Shemar at the meeting? Um, and can I just say, Helen?
Every time we have a report from you, there's always something wild and wonderful that's happened. There's always something different and I just want to thank you so much. I know it just seems all we do is thank you, but there's not much else we can do um at the at the present time. But thank you so very much. Your work is really outstanding with your team.
Um, and we appreciate your comments and I will pass those on. It's it's kind of you to say so.
Thank you. No, that's brilliant. Anybody got any questions for Helen?
No, there's no, no one's got their hands up. So is it back over to you, Robin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And what I'll do is now is introduce um Christine Marsden, who's the coordinator for our uh Kick the Dust Norfolk uh project. And within the report, you've got, as with previous meetings, a summary of of progress with Kick the Dust. But I thought it would be very helpful if Christine joined the meeting and gave members uh uh an update and obviously deal with any uh questions or comments. So uh, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Robin, and thank you, Chair, for inviting me to speak today. Um, I am actually going to share um some, just three slides with some infographics on, so that as I speak for about ten minutes, um, it really builds on what Helen's just been talking about, the resilience of young people to join the programmes and to keep going and particularly around some of the work that's been happening in Norwich. Uh, and then if anyone has any questions, to take those at the end. So I'm just going to share my screens, hopefully. Not one. Okay, can everybody see that? Is that okay? Councillor Brockford, is that, is that, can you see that? Yeah, lovely, thank you. Yeah, so, um just building on what you'll have read in the report, um, really to say where we're at now, it's very different to when I last spoke with this uh particular group. Uh, and as we enter the last eighteen months of the project, we've actually exceeded our target of providing eight thousand quality interventions to young people. And we've also been working with all the target groups that were initially identified in the first act uh Kick the Dust Activity Plan. So the numbers that we have up to January twenty twenty one, which come from October twenty eighteen, is that we've had two thousand five hundred and twenty eight young people who have engaged in just over eight thousand interventions. So that takes us to a hundred and two percent of our target. And that's over four thousand of high quality activity across the county. And just to put that into perspective in terms of lockdown, when we started in March twenty twenty, no one ever thought that now this week we would still be talking about being in lockdown and all the work that we've been doing, which probably ninety nine percent has been digital. And just to put that into perspective, of those two thousand five hundred plus young people, eight hundred and thirteen have engaged digitally since last March, which I think is quite phenomenal. Um, and they've done more than one interaction because there's been just over two thousand digital interactions with young people out of that eight thousand total. And just under a thousand hours of activity. So that just gives you a little bit of perspective um as to how, you know, how hard the project workers have been working and how how much they've worked to get those young people uh with their partners engaged in the programme. In terms of the ages, you can see that there's been a massive shift towards a twenty to twenty five age bracket, forty nine percent are in that. And that's because one of our key partners, the YMCA, uh, we predominantly have been working with them in lockdown. So thirty two percent of all that activity has been with that particular group of young people. Um, but we still are doing an awful lot with the other age groups, through the different groups. And as we get into more face to face work, it will become easier to engage with those with those younger groups. Um, because safeguarding becomes less of a a an ob- a barrier, if you like, than it perhaps it is when you're trying to do it online. Um, so I just wanted to to sort of take you through um what the purpose of Kick the Dust is and where we're at at the minute. In terms of the programme, it's Player, Shaper, Leader. So Player is very much the early, the early days, the start, one off, light touch activity, visits, to really sort of build relationships and get them infused with museums and heritage and the arts. And then Shaper is very much where young people would then take ownership of what they're doing and help shape uh the future direction of the service to then Leader, where we'd want them taking on more of those leadership roles. And since we actually started, you can see that in twenty nine, twenty eighteen nineteen, it was very much based around Player and very much not Leader. And as we've now got through to uh twenty twenty one, where we're at now is the product, the majority of activity is at the Shaper level at forty seven percent of all activities, where we've got young people co-designing, co-delivering, really being uh quite influential in terms of how activities and programmes are put together. And um Helen's already mentioned the work that Rachel Daniel's been doing with it with the Castle Curators, for example, is one example of that. Really shaping the offer and then twenty percent towards Leader. So we are exactly where we need to be in in the third year of the project. Uh, we still have quite a lot at Player level, but that's predominantly because the YMCA have quite a big turnover of young people, where people, young people move on. And so we try and work with their youth engagement workers who are embedded posts within the organisation. And they're still delivering what we class as pre-player and player activity to engage those initially in the more uh longer term projects that we've got ongoing. Um, and something that I wanted to to bring out is actually in the yellow boxes. I can't see it on my my screen, so hopefully you can. Um, something that's been really significant is the percentage of young people who are leading and and uh designing projects and delivering training. So fifty four percent of all the activity is invol- is now involves young people leading and designing their own projects, exhibitions, et cetera. Uh, so we've got young people um who are young peer evaluators. So we've got eight young people in total who are working with the audience agency as young peer evaluators. And they'll be working particularly with Rachel Daniel in Norwich on evaluating in May how the Sat- the new Saturday Art Lab programme, which has been funded through the new um grant funding that we've had to supplement Kick the Dust through the Youth Accelerator Fund. So they'll be working alongside that to to look at the impact of that programme, the progression through for those young people. We've also got six young people who are supporting six curators acting as digital buddies. So whilst they're learning about what the role of a curator is, they're also supporting those curators around their social media, how they adapt that to engage younger audiences, different audiences, uh which has been really successful and that's been running for about six months now. Um, and the top box really just shows the percentage of activity. And you'll notice that in Norwich, twenty five percent of all activity is taking place in Norwich. I don't want people to get hung up on the on the actual statistics, um because there is only Rachel Daniel, who was the project worker doing the activity in Norwich, whereas in the West, where it's much higher, we have a project worker based out in the Wreche, but she's also supported by um somebody else who does some time and also Melissa Hawker, who works as the Youth Engagement Officer, supporting Teenage History Club, who were part of Kick the Dust out in the West. And likewise, in the East, we have a project worker who's also supported uh by someone else who runs some of the the other groups there. So in terms of the activity that's happening in Norwich, what I would say is it is very much in the Shaper and Leader um areas, you know, that Rachel Daniel has been um been recruit, still able to recruit to programmes. And I think that's testament to her, the relationship she's built up. Uh, and also the quality of those programmes and the adventurousness within those programmes uh to get young people um engaged even in lockdown, particularly when they've not been part of the museum service before. Uh, so I just wanted to just make sure that those figures, whilst they're on paper, they do tell a story, a different story to what perhaps you might see initially. Um, and then I just wanted to share the groups. As I've mentioned, thirty two percent of all activity has been with YMCA clients, which is why the age bracket in terms of the the ages that we're working with is is slightly higher in that age group. But we're also doing an awful lot of work with with secondary and FE and HE. Um, and this week in particular, every day this week, we are running, um, we've got twelve schools engaged in the Discover Creative Careers events, which is part of National Careers Week, which is part of our work experience offer. Um, and Rachel Daniel's actually leading those sessions today. And I think that's quite significant within that event as well. If you look at the ones with with a special educational need at six percent, it's interesting that when we sent that out to all schools, the majority have targeted those individuals that they felt have missed out the most in lockdown from having that engagement with with other professionals and taking part in an experience of the workplace. Um, and they're predominantly all special needs uh in the sixteen to eighteen nineteen bracket that have come through for this week's events. And the other significant thing I think to pick out on there at fifteen percent is young people with mental health issues. A year ago, that line was at eight percent. And what we're finding this year is that there's a significant number um that um class themselves as having a mental health issue or partners have identified that that's been a particular concern. Some of those do come from the YMCA, but I think we have been doing a lot of the work that we have been doing as being around wellbeing uh and addressing some of those issues through the creativity programme. And I'll share in a moment uh some of that work that we've been doing with the stakeholder group that we've set up alongside uh Children's Services. So I just wanted to share, you know, in terms of, we are meeting all the needs of the groups, we are targeting all those groups. Um, but it's interesting to see the split when we start to look at who we're actually working with. And then my last slide was to to actually just reiterate around institutional change. As you'll be aware, we've got our external evaluators, Claire Adler and Anna Salaman, who were commissioned to carry out the evaluation for the Kick the Dust project, but around institutional change. So as well as taking young people on a journey and evaluating the impact that the Kick the Dust is having on them per se, which is highlighted in the in the headline report. This is the other side of that journey. It's the staff journey and the and the journey of the organisation as a whole. So each year, each May, we get a report which highlights following uh their extensive consultations. And I know some of the councillors here have been interviewed by by Claire or Anna in the past. Of the twenty nine recommendations that came from the twenty twenty report, we have met all but eight of those already. And those are because we're not able to access the sites at the moment. And it's particularly around working with front of house staff and and getting them more engaged with with some of the groups and the training that they've specifically asked for um before we went into the first lockdown. And I just wanted to pick out the five, some of the five key areas. The first one in particular, I think, you know, we've we've excelled at and exceeded any expectation that we might have had when this recommendation was set, which was around developing really sustainable, long term links with Children's Services, but all right across the board, not just with uh with how we'd been working, which tended to be more ad hoc, and establishing this stakeholder group. And that was really to develop more sustainable opportunities for young people so they could engage with heritage across the county. Uh, and it came about, we set up the what's now called the Making Creative Futures Group. And we set that up in um April twenty twenty. And that was a direct result of lockdown and recognising that we were going to be working with a lot of vulnerable young people who were going to be feeling very isolated and insecure and potentially not have any means to be creative, if you like, at home and were struggling digitally. We knew about digital poverty has been a real factor. And so we set that group up and it involves seventeen partners. The majority are through Children's Services, but also the wider cultural and heritage network like Festival Bridge that Helen's mentioned. They are one of our key partners in terms of the the Let's Create, the Creativity Packs that have been going out, uh Young Norfolk Arts, um YMCA are part of that. We've got quite a lot of organisations now that are coming through and saying, we need to be part of this, we need to engage with this process. How do we get involved? So we meet every month for just under an hour. Um, people can come and go and dip in and out depending on what the agenda is. Uh, just to put it into um perspective, there is a subgroup now called the Norfolk Creative Collective, uh which allows us um to have a a separate arm for making sure that we can deliver on that creativity agenda in terms of physical resources as well as digital resources for families, particularly those that um are struggling with lockdown. And at Christmas, we were able to send out eighteen hundred of the Egyptian board games that the Time Turners in the West actually um developed as part of the Creativity Pack, um which went out to about um fifteen thousand households altogether in terms of the whole package that was put together. Um, so I think, you know, it's quite significant that that was one of our recommendations and we knew that we needed to do that for for long term for legacy. But actually, the direction it's gone, I would say that, you know, as much as we don't want to be in lockdown, and that has been one of the benefits, that everybody's agenda has been the same. And we've all recognised that we needed to act quickly um to be able to address some of those needs. We're also working with Alive Norfolk on the delivery of their Holiday Activities and Food Project. That's the half DFE funded project, which is separate to um uh free school meals, but it is about targeting families and children on free school meals for an Easter package and also summer activities. Um, so that's something again that I know Helen uh with Lee Warden around the um nightclub have been putting together a live streaming that that can be shown over Easter for families to engage with. And what we're hoping in the summer is that we'll have much more of a um, an offer, a a bigger presence, if you like, within that offer around heritage, arts and culture, because we will be in a position to be able to offer more face to face or outdoor work potentially. Uh, the agenda for that group going forward is also identified that parents and carers and others that work with young people also want to develop their creativity skills. So we're looking at putting on potential activities or training which engages uh others in those conversations. And it came about from work with the youth offending team just before lockdown, really. And working with some of the parents of the children who were at risk of offending particularly. And then being able to say, well, actually, if I could do this type of work with my youth, it would allow me to have a conversation which is different to the conversation maybe I have now. So that's something we're looking to embrace and develop going forward. And then just just to finish, some of the other um recommendations that we've 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 capitalized on is making sure that young people are, more young people are involved in the co-design of our temporary exhibition spaces, which they've really wholeheartedly um taken control of, and that's working really well. Training came out of some of the discussions with our curatorial and exhibition staff. And we've actually, even though we've been in um lockdown, we've uh since we've had a hundred and ninety eight staff who've engaged in some form of training that we've put on, which is being around coaching and mentoring young people, working with young people who perhaps have come through the care system, those with hidden needs like anxiety, autism, those with special educational needs. And in April, we're running four sessions around mental health first aid training with the YMCA uh delivering that programme. And as well as that, staff are engaging in our new work experience programme. So it's not all dependent on the project workers. It's very much about um expanding that offer and having more staff uh feeling confident and skilled to be able to take uh ownership of some of that co-delivery of some of those programmes. In terms of our traineeships, you'll be aware that the current three bursary trainees that are funded through the Kick the Dust Programme um had their contracts extended through to September. As we knew we were in lockdown, that they wouldn't be able to get into the museum setting. That's had a knock on effect with our final year um of traineeships that we will be offering, uh which we will start on the fourth of October this year, but will end on the thirty first of May in twenty twenty two at the end of the project. Um, that has needed to be the case because we needed to make sure that the current bursary trainees felt supported and could have the opportunity at some point, hopefully from May, to get into a a museum space. They're working towards a Level Three Diploma in Cultural Heritage, um which is going really well. And despite lockdown, they're still managing to achieve uh a a high level. The new cohort, what we will be doing is starting in June. So we'll be identifying those young people that we feel would benefit from this traineeship as opposed to maybe applying for the Teaching Museum Main Programme. We'll be working with staff that we can identify who will be in a position to support those young people because we recognise that they do need more support, perhaps in some of the other trainees. And we will be introducing those young people to those staff, to the current cohort of trainees to really help them understand what the requirements will be and the expectations, to then put on some assessment centres, mock interviews, how to fill applications in, et cetera. So if they do decide to apply for the the three traineeships that will be put in forward, then they're in a much stronger position to understand what what that is. So on the fourth of October, when they will be able to start, they will be able to hit the ground running, as it were. They will have been in the museum setting, the museum space, they will have met staff, they will feel more confident uh uh rather than coming into it cold. Um, so that's going really well. And the last thing was to provide more leadership opportunities and that young people are more aware of them across the county as opposed to just in their local community. And I think with lockdown, we've had that, you know, we've had young people that perhaps have engaged with some of the Norwich projects that Rachel's been doing, that maybe don't live in Norwich, that wouldn't have engaged with them um before. We've had young people in the West who, you know, young people from Yorkshire and various places who've joined Teenage History Club um taking on leader roles. Plus, there's the the leader roles I mentioned around the young peer evaluators, the digital buddies. on leader roles. Plus, there's the the leader roles I mentioned around the Young Peer Evaluators, the Digital Buddies. We have a young lady um in the West who's leading on the Nothing About Us, Without Us Disability History in um Norfolk Project, which is going really well. Uh, you know, Castle Curator is an example of that, where young people are playing a a very key leader role. Our Young Ambassador uh is on the Norwich Project Steering Group and really does um do a lot of work as a volunteer on that group. We have another um young person who is a Young People's Champion, who really just champion the voice of young people across the county and brings that to the the Project Steering Group as well. So there's lots going on. Um if anyone has any questions either in the meeting, I'm happy to take those. So Chair, thank you very much for that. Or if anyone wants to send an email, I'm more than happy to to have a separate conversation outside of this meeting. So I'll just stop my sharing.
I just wanted to just possible, is that possible for us to have some three slides? Because where we were on the screen, we couldn't see your yellow box at all, Christine.
Right, okay. I will send those through.
Please, because um and I just wanted to thank you very much. Um just like the, you know, the other people in the team. I can remember maybe several years ago that I came to see you at the Museum of Norwich for Kick the Dust and my God, it's come, there's gone so much. It's really fantastic work that you're doing there. Um anybody got any questions? I've got some, but anybody got any questions before I ask mine? No, okay. So that's really good to see that there's two percent of young carers, but how can we um try and get more on board? Because I'm caring champion for Norfolk County Council, so you know, I was asked that. And the other thing is the the stuff that you're doing for the people that get the three, the kids that get free school meals. Um we found that as the the rooms where I'll be working, um we've been doing free school meals for the people that can get free school meals, if you like, if you know what I mean, the other the other parents, because having the children at home all the time, they still need um to to eat. Um I'm just wondering, is that going to be open for everybody or only for free school meal people?
If I take the last question first, because that's that's related to the uh the DFE funded project that Alive Norfolk are actually leading on. Um so they did ask other organisations, including ourselves, what what activities we might be able to support and offer into the mix, which is why we were able to offer a live uh streaming one. As part of that project, um it is uh the the criteria, I believe, is around families on free school meals. So it's not about those on the periphery, although what they have agreed is that access to the resources, not the food boxes, but the resources will be made available to everybody. So it so there'll be, if you like, a barrier to getting the uh free school meal offer, which is the through Pink Orange, who will be delivering the food boxes to those families with the resource packs, but they will have access to everything else that's that's on offer. Um because that's
Brilliant, thank you.
So if you want me to send the details of the person who's leading that within Alive Norfolk, I can send you that if you'd like more information about it.
Please, thank you.
And then the second question uh was around the percentage of young carers and how we get more on board. I think lockdown has really made that extremely difficult because we were at a point after we last spoke around getting onto the in care councils and uh we are in touch with those and communicate. But I think until we can have face to face, that has become quite a challenge. They have been um they have been engaging in some of the projects and I think digitally that's probably been easier. Um but it is something definitely that I can take back to the team and say, how can we uh how can we address this and how can we make sure that we um um we are inclusive of everyone, but we did talk about the sort of restrictions that young carers might face in terms of accessing some of the programmes that we run. So we are aware of it and I will certainly take that back. So thank you, councillor, for that.
Very much, it's brilliant. Anybody got any questions? Oh, yes, councillor Bard.
Thank you, Chair. Um thanks, Christine, for that presentation. That was really brilliant and it's so good to see how the project's like coming along. Um I think I met with you maybe.
You did, eighteen months ago, probably.
Yeah, when we were allowed out into the open. Um but so I just had a couple of questions about um the project. Um so firstly, I was just wondering whether you collect um data on nationality and ethnicity. Um because I just wondered what the engagement levels were for um for that across Norfolk. Um and then also, so from my experience of of working with young people and and um encouraging them to kind of engage with museum service and other things like that. Um the things that they particularly are drawn towards, particularly at the moment and last year with the Black Lives Matter protests and things um was learning around um sort of like Britain's history, um colonialism, all those types of things. Um and also there was a a period where um there were some LGBT history calls as well. And so I just wondered if those are things uh are going to be continued, because I think they're definitely an important part of like young people's identities at the moment. And I think um yeah, it should be interesting to hear more about that.
Um, yeah, I think um I did miss quite a bit of that. It's probably just my my connection. So it was your ex, the experience of um I heard young people are drawn towards and then I didn't get anything else and then I picked up on LGBTQ plus.
So I was just asking if um there was some engagement around, um you know, young people were campaigning for a a looking at like colonialism and educating other young people on that um as part of that sort of anti-racist work. Um so I wondered if that was something that's being worked.
Yeah, definitely. So in the East, we have a project that we're working with, uh Sheringham Little Theatre, which is around um rural racism. And they've been working with uh Teenage History Club and some other groups at uh East Coast College and Prince's Trust out in the East, getting their perspective on uh what it's what it's like and working with freelancers around that to put a play on. So the outcome of that will be in April, so I can certainly feed that back in terms of what that looks like and the resources and materials that will be there to support schools, because the idea there will be something that will tour schools. So they've got a a quality resource to support them in 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 that agenda. So that's definitely one that uh young people have been actively engaged with. The LGBTQ plus is definitely one that um obviously NMS and Kick the Dust has been um very much a a part of. And Teenage History Club in the West were um hosting the Out in the Past uh conference, the only young people's group who were given the responsibility to to lead on that and did a fantastic job. Um and about identity, did you mention something about identity?
Just whether you had any data on um the nationality of young people.
Yeah, as part of the external evaluation that we do for National Lottery Heritage Fund, uh we do what's called a Young People's Feedback Form. And and within that, we do ask them if they would like to uh share with them the data around their ethnicity, um amongst other things. Um that gets published every year, so I can certainly send the um updated report that came from from the results of our evaluation. So that's the the audience agency did that on our behalf to report back through to RNEC, who are the National Lottery Heritage Fund External Evaluation Team. And there was a report which reports on the twelve national projects. Uh and then we'll show you the line for um Kick the Dust Norfolk Journeys Project. Is that if that would be useful, I can forward that as well to members.
Thanks, Christine.
Yeah, so if I forward that one reporting and then in, you know, we separately, we do ask for that information, but it does get reported annually as opposed to something that I would report on monthly.
Yeah, good, good, good question, Jess. Welcome. Um are we back to you, Robin, or are we on there on the reports from representatives of voluntary organisations?
Uh I think just a few more items for me, Chair, if that's okay. Um firstly, uh just to provide members with a very quick update on where we are with the uh Norwich Castle uh project. Um so uh it would be lovely to think at some point we can have a a meeting that involves giving members a behind the scenes hard hat tour, hopefully not too far away from that becoming a a reality. But um I appreciate it's very sort of uh frustrating for members not being able to see what's going on, but just to give you a very quick update, um despite the impact of 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 Covid, I think the the project is still making a good progress. Um as members are aware, we've now got all the hoarding lines up, um and that includes um a lot of work around uh site security uh and ensuring that uh any effects for wider uh museum i- is sort of mitigated. And that involves uh the um main bill contractor working very closely with NMS teams to ensure that um both in terms of premises, security, maintenance and uh collections, um that risks are being identified in a timely manner and then mitigated. Um we're working very closely with the main contractor to confirm the detail now of the of the bill programme. A lot of, obviously, a lot of work has taken place, but um wanting to put the final uh programme in place. And that obviously includes um picking up on any impacts from um co-programme, not surprisingly, but we're doing whatever we can to mitigate that. Um we're continuing to work really closely with colleagues in the city council uh in terms of landlord matters, also around discharge of planning uh and other consents. Also working closely with Historic England uh around schedule monument consent and uh structural changes. Um quite a bit of archaeology and further survey and investigation work has been taking place. So in advance of any structural work happening, um we've got archaeologists in on site who are busy uh recording. Um and, you know, we have made some discoveries mostly relating to the prison period. Um we've carried out some sort of significant work in terms of uh drainage connections. Um the sort of brass tacks of the project all being put into place. So um as previously reported, um major drainage connections have now been installed in the rotunda area. And all of that area is now being reinstated to facilitate visitor access when we can reopen. We've also completed the removal of all the flagstones uh from the keep basement, and that's facilitating the commencement of further drainage works. Um we're also undertaking a lot of survey and investigative work in the moment in in advance of uh piling taking place as part of the preparation of foundations. And most recently, we've been removing some of the more modern roof structures. So um I was actually on site this morning. And the roof has been removed from above what was the uh uh former cafe. And also um the corridor roof has been removed. It takes you from reception down to the rotunda. And what you were getting this morning was a first glimpse of the new prospect of the east face of the keep that visitors will gain. Um previously, it was not visible because of the roof structure. Um but visitors will be able to uh enjoy the whole of the east face facade of the keep through the new glass atrium that's being created as part of this project. So we were just getting glimpses this morning uh of what that visitor experience uh will be like. Um obviously proceeding very carefully to ensure that any impacts on the historic fabric are are sort of uh mitigated. So a lot of protection work has been taking place recently to ensure that historic features are protected in advance of uh of of major construction work. So uh yeah, a lot of progress and hopefully at a future meeting, uh we can arrange a hard hat tour for members uh to get a real sense of all the exciting progress uh that's been made. Um and we'll obviously continue to keep updating these meetings as the project uh develops. So uh I don't know if anybody had any questions on the on the uh keep project. Chair, if not, I can move on swiftly to deal with some other items.
There's no hands up. Anyone got any questions for Robin? No, Robin, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. In which case, um in the report, you've got updates from colleagues at both the Museum of Norwich and Strangers Hall. Uh those sites obviously have remained closed uh throughout the pandemic period. But I think the staff at both museums have done tremendous work uh making their collections uh a a accessible to uh both existing and new audiences and have really sought out opportunities to work in partnership with others to celebrate not only their own collections and stories, but also to work with other organisations. And I've highlighted in the report um the uh partnership um that the Museum of Norwich have developed uh celebrating community cohesion, the Fine City Neighbours uh uh activities. So um really good example of the way in which uh staff are being very sort of proactive and creative. Um also details of the uh digital Christmas quiz organised by staff at the Museum of Norwich and also at Strangers Hall, which uh over the last few years have been a real focus for uh Christmas activities. And we've had over the last two years, very successful uh Christmas events. Um and obviously, that's had to go online uh this year. Uh but again, staff, I think, have done very well uh working with Helen's team to develop a whole range of opportunities through both Museum of Norwich and Strangers Hall. And what I wanted to do, Chairman, at this point is hand over to Dr Francesca Vanke, who's the senior curator for for Norwich, to give an update on other uh sort of curatorial activity within NMS. Thank you.
Yeah, um thank you very much, Robin, and um thank you, everybody, for um inviting me to the meeting. Um as you will um have uh seen from the report um we submitted earlier, um all our curators are are busily working away, are sorted projects, um even while um working remotely. Um uh Tim Pestall, the curator of archaeology, as you would um understand, uh is um working primarily on the keep project um in almost every aspect of his time. Um but he has also been um characteristically uh doing other other things as well. Um we have developed a series of talking objects videos for the NMS, the YouTube ch- channel. And um Tim has done a couple of these, um which kind of will, which have served the purpose of bringing um viewers closer to some of the objects which we will be expecting to have in the new um medieval displays. I have um posted links um to YouTube, so you can have a look at those. Um he's um made uh both of those um himself um in his office on his own. So obviously, it's um it's a kind of a very close focus on kind of one person, one object. Uh otherwise, um um Georgia Botanelli, the curator of his his historic art, um his is about to um open within the next couple of months, the uh John Chrome Bi-Centenary Exhibition. Um a passion for landscape, reimagining John Chrome. And as you will already know, um the Friends of Norwich Museums are uh very kindly supporting this exhibition as a key part of their twenty twenty one um centenary uh celebrations. And even though the um original opening date of the show was twenty third of April, it will be ready for then, but obviously it will be up in time for us to reopen in mid-May. Hopefully, that will happen. Um there's been um one or two uncertainties concerning loans, um which we weren't entirely sure due to Covid, we're going to be able to be available. Um for example, the British Museum had said, um unfortunately, we can't let you have loans, but luckily, they've now changed their mind and they've said we can have some of the loans we're going to have. Uh it's been a bit up and down. Um but um either way, um we should have um a com- completely new and groundbreaking type of exhibition. And John Chrome is a notoriously difficult artist to attribute. And because of that, Georgia has developed a kind of conservation based approach whereby kind of we use analysis on some of the works to look beneath the surface of the paint. And hopefully, that may um help to settle some of the vexed questions of attribution which have surrounded some of Chrome's work for the last um hundred years or or more. And um she is uh working away on the catalogue as as well. Um which again, dis- despite um all odds, should be ready in in time for the exhibition. Um she's she's been um collaborating quite closely with conservatives at Tate Britain um on this um conservation um conservation based approach, which is um quite um um interesting and quite unusual. It's it's not something that we have done um to quite this level before. And um as uh I I think we we might have mentioned at the last meeting, um in order to kind of broaden out the um the focus on Norwich and in order to kind of broaden out the focus on Norwich in past and present, there'll be a concurrent exhibition at the Museum of Norwich at the Bridewell of an exhibition of contemporary photographs produced by Nick Stone entitled Chrome's Norwich. And his work produces kind of kind of past and present images superimposed on top of each other. So you get both an image of one of Chrome's works plus a photograph of that same area of Norwich as it looks today. So you can see the process of history. So that's something quite new as well. Our other curators, Rosie Gray, the curator of modern and contemporary art. Her main focus at the moment is working with Amanda on the East Anglia Art Fund's Open Art Show. And that is due to open in the Timothy Gurney Gallery from the 8th of May. And this also is aimed to complement the themes of the John Chrome show. And the topic will be landscape and the title is Somewhere Unexpected. And this is also not only to coincide with Chrome, but also to acknowledge the significance of our own environments in the context of the global pandemic. So yes, we are physically somewhere unexpected, but metaphorically somewhere unexpected as well. And I believe the call out to the artists is due to close at the end of this week. And we've already got over 100 submissions to that, which is which is great. And we're also having for the first time entries in new media, performance and video. They're also being invited for the first time, so that's quite a nice new development. Otherwise, Rosie is working on exhibition projects slightly further ahead in the future, including the major show Slaves of Passion, which is planned for autumn 2022, which is working with the contemporary artists, the Singh Twins. And this will be quite a complex show, which combines the twins' large scale paintings with works from our own collections of art, social history and costume and textiles. And we are hoping also, Rosie is fundraising separately for this. We are hoping that this will include a commission from the twins for our own permanent collection. And further also on into the future, Rosie's very busy this next couple of years. She's working with the artist Yelena Popova on an exhibition for the Timothy Gurney Gallery, which at the moment is planned for spring 2022. And Popova kind of creates links between art and geology and also nuclear histories. She is Russian and is very, has been very interested in the legacy of Chernobyl in Russia. And she's interested in interested in nuclear sites in general and has been visiting Saiswell on the Suffolk coast. And Rosie will be working on the geology element of that with David Waterhouse, our senior curator of natural history. And he's been spending his time over the last couple of months on various different projects, digital projects. And he's been working quite a bit on the Deep History Coast project. He's been putting in a funding bid together with NMS learning team based at Chroma for learning facilities there. He's also been working with teachers in Chroma and Yarmouth. And he's been doing Zooms, Zooms sessions for teacher training about the Deep History Coast. And he's also been on the TV programme Escape to the Country recently to discuss responsible fossil collecting and has been writing a script for a geology YouTube video for NMS museums pass holders. And there's been a recent new development, Radio Norfolk has been having on Saturday mornings, an object of the week spot in which they've invited NMS staff, not just curators, but various different departments to talk about their favourite object. And David appeared on Radio Norfolk talking about fossils recently. I believe, yeah, several other people from other parts of the service have as well. As did I, in fact, I, to celebrate LGBTQ History Month, I talked about on Radio Norfolk a few weeks ago, an object by, an object in our collections by a gay ceramic artist, Emmanuel Cooper. I had also put together a mini online exhibition for the blog website in in the form of LGBTQ history of the 20th century through the work of 10 artists in the collection, dating right over the century. Otherwise, I have been preparing, making a lot of practical preparations for the loan of a painting from the National Gallery. The Fortress of Koenigstein from the north by Bernardo Bellotto was part of a tour of paintings of castles, of a group of paintings, which was unable to come to us in its full format due to lockdown. However, this painting is still available this year, so we are going to display it as a single spotlight loan in the common project space. I'm also hoping to do an online version of the full exhibition that couldn't happen. And I'm just looking into the into the sorted options for that at the moment. Other, other staff are, we've Batsy Bute, the senior curator of costumes and textiles. She put up the spectacular textile treasures exhibition in the Norwich Union Gallery just before Christmas in time for its projected opening date. Unfortunately, this had to be deinstalled. However, we can, we're fairly sure that we can remount this, hopefully in the Timothy Gurney Gallery during either this year or early next year. And so the work on that won't be lost, it will just happen in a different form. Otherwise, also Kate Thaxton, the curator of the regimental collections, has been working on a complete update and upgrade of the regimental museum's website, which is going to work really well. It's, she was thinking that she might just do quite a small update, but in fact, she thinks it'll work much better to totally revamp it. And at the same time, she is also doing a major reorganisation of her stores. So she's particularly looking forward to being able to get back to the office. I think that's probably enough from me for now.
Well, we've got a lot to look forward to in the years ahead, obviously. And thank you so much for describing that to us. That was brilliant. Thank you so much. Anybody else, Councilor Maxwell?
Yep, thank you very much for that. It was really, really interesting. I don't know how you found the time to do all that. I was particularly interested in the LGBT plus exhibition. I saw a small one in the library when we did it. And it's so much interesting to expand what we're doing. Also, I'm a member, my ward is Crown Ward and so is the leader of the councils. So when you do put that exhibition on, I suggest you ask him. But thank you for what you're doing. Absolutely brilliant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions? No, it looks like that's it. But thank you so much for the report. Brilliant. Well done. Robin, I'll be back to you now. Robin, are we back to you now?
Just to give a quick update on visitor numbers and also, yes, indeed, Chair. So if you can hear me, I was just saying I'll endure it to give an update on social media statistics.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you. I'll just share a screen with the group if I may. Hopefully, this will work. Can everybody say that?
Yes.
Thank you. So first and foremost, just in terms of visitor numbers for the period we're reporting on, we were obviously only open for a few days in December before we were put into lockdown. So the figures for December were around 750 visitors to Norwich Castle over 23 days that we were open. Obviously, we had to close on the 24th, so we only had 23 days open, which is an average of about 32 people a day, which on the face of it doesn't sound spectacular. But actually, given the fact that we were obviously in the midst of dealing with COVID and the disruption of the keep project in what is December is one of our, December and January historically are our most quiet months anyway, obviously, people are generally busy shopping, etc. But so 750 visits for December. But looking at social media stats, I just wanted to update the members on some of our social media performance over the period of December to January. I've just put on the screen there some of the headline figures of the number of followers across the four platforms that we have at Norwich Museums totaling 56,000 followers now. And just to give a bit of breakdown to those figures, in terms of audiences, Norwich Museum has gained in total over 1,200 new followers on the three key social media platforms. So that's Facebook, Twitter and Instagram since November 2020. In addition, Norwich Castle has gained 113 subscribers on the new YouTube account, which launched in October of 2020. And the Central Museum Service YouTube account, which is shared by the other nine museum sites, now has a total of 469 subscribers. In terms of engagement and reach of what those numbers, sorry, I've just had your internet connection is unstable come up. Can everybody still hear me?
Yes, again.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I always get nervous when that comes up. It's living in the village where I am, it's not great. In terms of what they mean, what those figures mean in engagement and reach. So for Norwich Castle's tweets were liked over 4,300 times and retweeted 778 times throughout December and January. And they earned a massive 598,000 impressions, which is the number of times that the tweets have actually been seen. Norwich Castle's Facebook reach, which is the number of people who saw the content, was 68,197 across December and January. Instagram reach was 40,777, which is 32% higher than the previous two months. The account ran a giveaway in January to celebrate reaching 5,000 followers, which generated a lot of new followers and engagement. The prize for this was a one-year museum pass and the giveaway post had a reach of over 7,000 and resulted in over 200 profile visits, of which 63% of those accounts reached were not already Norwich Castle Instagram followers. So that's fantastic. Tweets from the Museum of Norwich and over 71,000 impressions. And Norwich, Museum of Norwich's Facebook reach was 22,341 for December and January. Museum of Norwich always has had and is largely linked to its redevelopment back a few years ago, a massive following on social media, which is fantastic, but also consistently that following has grown. On Twitter, tweets from Strangers Hall were retweeted 187 times and their content earned nearly 70,000 impressions over that period, which is fantastic. And Strangers Hall's Facebook reach was 2,335 in December and January. And just lastly for me, a couple of social media highlights in terms of the the content. In December, we celebrated the festive season on our social media platforms using the hashtag Merry NMSmas. And Norwich Castle promoted a meaningful and ethical Christmas gifts, including the Adopt an Object campaign for the keep redevelopment and the New Art UK online shop. Strangers Hall shared an advent calendar which highlighted objects across the collections and told the history of Christmas day by day. Highlights included a performance of the earliest known Christmas carol, the Boar's Head Carol, which dates from the 15th century and was by trainee Natasha Allen Smith, and a reading of the Seventeenth Valleys of Ashford Thorpe by the learning team Susie Childerhouse. Museum of Norwich also challenged the people of Norwich to a festive quiz with questions set by local partners, which included Visit Norwich, Gerald's, Norwich Lane's Theatre Royal and Norwich Cathedral. So that's just an update on the social media from me. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you, Chair, so we can see who's, anyone's got my hands up?
My apologies, of course. Break it down, I'm so sorry.
Okay, let me just stay in.
My apologies, I haven't got a, oh, stop share, red button, there we go. Sorry about that. I'm not used to using it.
Yes, thank you. Just a query on the Norwich art. Nothing there for Facebook. It says, I wonder why we're not putting any of the art on Facebook, please?
I'm not entirely sure, if I'm honest. Robin, are you aware why the Norwich art's not on Facebook? So I think Robin's having connectivity problems.
I was just looking for my mute button, sorry. That is a sort of historic account and increasingly we're sort of moving away from specific to Norwich Castle, is my understanding, but we could certainly, we'll check on that.
Okay.
Anybody else got any questions? No, still, I think you got off lightly there, but that was a really good report. And that's great to see that so many people are using, you know, the Twitter and the Facebook. I mean, it's absolutely amazing. Well done. And Robin, are we going over to Felicity now or do you have more?
That's the end of the museum's report. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. And Felicity, did you have a report that you wanted to say?
I haven't, I haven't really got an official report, Julie, but I can just sort of just go through one, two thoughts. Just to tell everyone, as you know, we're having our centenary year this year. But because of the situation, we've had to cancel or postpone quite a few of our events. One of them was a lunch hosted by our patron, Lord Chalmley, and we were going to have a nice lunch over at Houghton, which was rather exciting, but that's all had to be shelved. We also had a family trail planned for the three museums in Norwich. But for, well, it was decided, you know, not to go ahead with that either, but it might be something we could possibly do in 2022 and, you know, hopefully things have returned to normal. And we've had some nice publicity coverage and I don't know if anyone saw the projections on the castle. But for three days last week, we had some lovely projections on the castle, featuring some objects that we'd helped to buy over the last hundred years. And we had some very nice photographs taken by Peter King. And I'm going to be sending those, or I'm collaborating with Esther Morgan. And we're going to, there's going to be a report on the history of the Friends and also feature hopefully some of those projected photographs, which came out extremely well. I was really pleased with them. And that's going to happen again on the 11th, 12th and 13th of March. So it's when it comes to dark, you know, at the end of the day. So if anyone's in Norwich at those times, you know, perhaps you look up, you can see, you can see the projections. And we had a nice article, a full page article in the Norfolk Journal about our new chairman, Charles Bingham Newland. And which was very, which was very good. They covered And which was very, which is very good. They covered all his views on the Road of the Friends and so on. And he also mentioned, I don't know if you can see that, that's the article. But he mentioned the Chrome, our sponsorship of the Chrome. So I was really, really pleased to hear about very good news about the loans from the British Museum changing their minds. And so we're really looking forward to that in mid-May. And that's going to be a big day for the Friends as well, to be present on that occasion. We're bringing out our newsletter, but it's not going to be, it's not in print yet. But our next meeting, I'll perhaps bring a copy for everybody. We may be meeting in person on that occasion, so that'd be something to look forward to. So that's about it really at the moment.
So the 11th, 12th and 13th of March, is that from about 5:30? Is there a certain time?
Yes, it's sort of getting dark about 5:30 time and that goes on for about three or four hours, something like that. It's a routine. It was set up by the Norwich Bid in association with the NMS and support from Steve Miller. So we're very grateful for that and it's given us a good profile.
Now, that's really, that's really good, really useful information there. Anybody got any questions for Felicity, the Friends? There's no questions for this team. So just while we were on, I did get a text from councillor Huntley to say that councillor McCarley Gray did give apologies for the meeting. So if we can list that one then, Jackie, please. And also, I would like to just say thank you to George Nobbs and Kim Clipsham. And also, even though this is our first one and she's done really well, councillor Bonard as well, because they'll be standing down as next elections for county council. And so we won't be having them come to another meeting. So I'd just like to say thank you so much for all that they've put forward for us and I'm sure that you'd agree. And I don't know about any city councils that are standing down that won't be back next time. I mean, I'm up to elections, so I might be not be back next time. We'll just play it by ear, shall we? I don't think, I think that's all on the agenda. Has anybody got anything else that they want to say before we depart?
Excuse me, Chair, we did have dates for the next lot of meetings.
Okay. I knew that if I missed something, you would tell me, Jackie. Thank you so much. Right, so. She said she was wrestling for her papers.
Chair, it's actually on the agenda, so it's on page three.
Okay. So to approve a schedule of meetings, subject to approval at the Norwich City Council's annual council as follows: 8th of June 2021, 7th of September 2021, 7th of December 2021 and the 1st of March 2022. Are we all agreeing with that? I'm getting lots of nods. I would imagine that we're all happy with that. That's fantastic. That is it then. Thank you so much for all attending and I hope you had a really lovely time like I have. And good luck, everybody, and hope to see you in June. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.